Good evening and welcome. North Las Vegas City Council is glad to have you here at our council meeting today. There are two public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning of the meeting and one at the end. If you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards that are located at the table outside the main entrance where you entered, over here to my left or your right on the guard on the podium rail. Please give the card to the city clerk. She sits right there. Would you raise your hand? Just go to her and she will take that card. And when I call upon you to speak, I request that you leave your comments no more than three minutes and we avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with Nevada open meeting law?
Yes, Mayor, we are in compliance.
Great. Tonight, we have a wonderful special opportunity to have an invocation given by Pastor Nathan Elder from one of our local churches, the North Las Vegas Church of Christ, here with us. He's a good day to bless us. Following that, there will be the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Churchill. Please rise.
Eternal Father God, God of wisdom, blessed be your holy and most righteous name. We seek your help and guidance today as we gather for this council meeting. Mighty God, give these men and women here the clarity of thought and a sound mind that they may be able to effectively manage each part of today's agenda. Thank you again, Father God, for the skills and the talent that you have given everyone that is a part of this wonderful team. We pray that you give them the great insight that they need to discuss their plans and make decisions concerning the future of North Las Vegas. Father God, guide their hearts to perceive every, any and every positive outcome, letting those favorable results encourage each and every heart in this room and in this city. Reveal, oh Father God, any problem areas that may arise in these proceedings today and show them how best to resolve these issues that coincide with the pressing matters of our great city. Oh God, help these men and women that you have entrusted with this great task to know both your wisdom and to use that wisdom in making decisions that are being contemplated on these matters today. It is you, oh God, who knows all things. So if it is in your divine way and if it is thine will, please be present among us in this meeting today. This we ask in the holy name of Jesus. Let us all say, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Tonight, we have a proclamation that we are giving to the North Las Vegas Library Service Department staff for their heroic effort that they did during the pandemic. This will be led by Councilman Churchill and then after a proclamation to Don Sofer and Ashley Campbell, they put together our SNUMA school, Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy School during the pandemic, and that will be led by Councilman Goins Brown. Councilman, let's go down front and make this presentation.
I was going to say good evening, but it's not evening yet. Gives us great pleasure to not only hold our council meetings once every two weeks, but whenever we got the opportunity to present proclamations to people, very deserving people this week, of course, our employees over here, you know, for the good work that they've done during this crazy time with the COVID-19. So my first proclamation that I would like to share with everybody, of course, is with our director of library services, Mr. Forrest Lewis. Let me read this over here and then we'll get into the wherethes, okay? You know, it's really, it has my pleasure, but it's really our pleasure to recognize members of the library services team over here. These outstanding individuals helped our residents and businesses in North Las Vegas during the pandemic. I also want to acknowledge, of course, our library director Forrest Lewis for his leadership on this effort. One such effort was when the CARES funds were being distributed, our library staff personally picked up the phone and called every single North Las Vegas business owner and hundreds of residents to see how the city could help them thrive. In less than a week, our staff provided $100,000 worth of assistance to more than 25 households. A big thank you to Forrest Lewis, my friend, our friend, and the library staff for becoming a crucial part of the city's efforts during these challenging times. So, whereas, since the start of COVID-19 crisis, the city of North Las Vegas has strived to keep the residents informed with up-to-date assistance. And whereas, when the statewide quarantine was implemented and libraries were ordered to close, your leadership of the library services, Forrest, team quickly took action and became a crucial part of keeping the businesses afloat and guide residents during these challenging times. And whereas, without a doubt, your leadership and the library staff have been a crucial part of our successful efforts in keeping our community thriving. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do here recognize and honor Mr. Forrest Lewis, library district director. And we, of course, signed it all.
Thank you very much. This is a great honor, but really, all our staff, we, I was very impressed how everybody stepped up when we needed to. And more importantly, being a part of the city with mayor and council, with your guys' initiative and Ryan. We had, I was really impressed at the beginning when this happened and COVID and everything kind of closed down and, you know, you take the public out of public library and we were really wondering what we could do. But the city stepped up and we were able to take the skills and lessons that we have working every day in the library and turn that into a whole new direction to help our residents. So we worked Alfredo, Dellen, Rich Easter, we worked a whole lot. We worked with Rich so much, I thought Ryan was going to put him to my payroll because he was there. So we just, I'm very grateful, thank you so much, and this really means a lot to us in the library and we're just so grateful to be able to help the public in the way that we were able to.
I don't know that you understand the gravity of what happened. When we were going to shut down our libraries and our senior centers, we did not want to lose these wonderful part of our family. City of North Las Vegas residents know our librarians. They very seldom know us, but they know their librarians. And the city manager was able to quickly turn them into a call center to call every single business in North Las Vegas and say, you've got this money coming. It's federal money. You're not borrowing it. It's your money. Keep your business open, keep your employees in North Las Vegas working. We're going to work through this together. And these people made thousands of, hundreds of thousands of phone calls. Then a little later, we had them calling another assistance program, but the real big one was, we had the pandemic come in and we decided that Ryan somehow commandeered Mojave High School. We put paper on the ground and we brought in our police department, we brought in our fire department, we brought in nurses. And we had these wonderful people calling people up and scheduling them every 15 minutes. So when somebody came, they showed them the card and they said, oh, that's wonderful. Have you been sick? No. Then go over to this station. They go to that station and they would wait two people and then they would get their shot. And they would go sit on the bleachers at the gymnasium there. They would wait 15 or 20 minutes, I don't remember how much. And then from there, they escorted to another location where there were some more of these wonderful people and they put you down for the second shot. So we worked almost 100,000 people through this process. We spent $6,800 putting the system together with phones and all that kind of stuff. The county did the same thing. I think I found out for like $6 million over there and people were in these long serpentine lines. No, not in North Las Vegas. Our North Las Vegas staff is efficient, effective, we have great leaders, but it was these people who saved lives and they saved businesses in this community. And I think that's far greater than anything the mayor and council has done during that pandemic. You guys are our heroes. Thank you very much. And I'd like Alfredo, Assistant City Manager, to maybe take a word here.
Oh, well, thank you, Mayor. You know, I got into local government with it as a willingness and a desire to serve and there was nothing more that inspired me more with that first spirit about, you know, working in local government. And a lot of our library employees, you know, just started maybe a few years ago, that spirit that in local government, when you're asked to do one thing, they might hire you for one thing, but they may ask you to do something else and then a little something else. And so every time we came back and said, we need to serve our residents in this way. It's different from what we told you two weeks ago, but because everything has changed from two weeks ago, they responded every time. They responded every time. They learned the, a lot of the new regulations on the fly and were able to help residents with questions. And for that, I think everybody is going to be forever grateful.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alfredo. All right, so we'll get into the wherethes again, but this will be for the team now. Whereas, since the start of COVID-19 crisis, the city of North Las Vegas has strived to keep residents informed with up-to-date assistance. And whereas, when the statewide quarantine was implemented and libraries were ordered to close, Forrest Lewis, library director, and his team quickly took action and had library staff become a crucial part of keeping businesses afloat and guide residents during the challenging times. And whereas, our public library staff worked on curbside pickups, digital programming, virtual reference assistants, social media promotion, and database instruction. And whereas, without doubt, our library staff has been a crucial part of our successful efforts in keeping our community thriving. Now therefore, we, the city council, city of North Las Vegas, do hereby recognize the following. If you don't mind, how do they call your names? Will you come down, please? Shelley Alexander. Cheyenne Damian. Sonia Grace. Elky Cruz. Alejandro Satello. Evan Vick. Elizabeth Lucchese, sounds like a New York person. And last but definitely not least, Vanessa Dwyer. Thank you all.
You're going to have to pull in here.
Come on in, we'll do probably two rows.
Yeah.
Okay, sure. Okay, that's the one. Okay, side as well.
I'll come this way.
All right.
My font is not as big as your font.
Yeah, well, I'm over in the middle.
Let's balance it up.
You can come closer, we've got a couple.
Can we have a couple on the other side of Mayor here? That's okay.
Yeah, that tall guy should stay over there. The short guy. Put the little guys in the middle.
There we go.
There we go.
All right, I'm going to take a couple, really. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Let me get one. Phone, we can get on social. Here we go, one, two, and three. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank you, team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Good work. We don't need to.
What's that they want? And then they go back to work.
Today, I have the pleasure of honoring two people who have been very instrumental to the success of SNUMA. They represent the Nevada Action for School Options, the city's nonprofit partner in the SNUMA program. The Nevada Action for School Options has been a leader in advocating for and providing diverse, high-quality education options to Nevada learners since its establishment in 2017. We are indeed proud to have partnered with them in innovating program that enables our North Las Vegas kids to receive a high-quality education despite the challenges posed by the pandemic. I am honored to read this proclamation honoring Mr. Don Sofer, come on up, and Ms. Ashley Campbell of the Nevada Action for School Options. Ashley, come on up. Whereas, the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy, or SNUMA, is a groundbreaking public-private partnership between the city of North Las Vegas and the Nevada Action for School Options to create a micro-school design specifically as an in-person solution for students in North Las Vegas to counter learning loss during the closure of schools during the pandemic. And whereas, SNUMA provided in-person education support to children in grades one through eight who participated in a homeschool program that involved remote teachers provided by third-party education companies and in-person guides. And whereas, during the first school year, SNUMA produced impressive academic gains by providing learning opportunities in a structured and enriched environment. And whereas, the success of SNUMA would not have been possible without the innovative ideas and collaboration of the city of North Las Vegas with the Nevada Action for School Options. Now therefore, we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do hereby here recognize and honor Don Sofer, founder and president of Nevada Action for School Options, and Ashley Campbell, chief of staff, Nevada Action for School Options, and encourage our citizens to join us in expressing appreciation of their invaluable contributions to this SNUMA program. Congratulations. Don, would you like to say a few words?
Councilwoman, councilmembers, Mayor, you believed in us and you, city manager and your team, you helped us make our plan, a good one, so that we could believe in North Las Vegas's learners and their families. And we did that every single day and they held up their end of the bargain. And together, we taught North Las Vegas and we taught America a new way of doing teaching and learning and schooling. And we will never forget that in Normal Day and we're incredibly grateful for the faith that you put in us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just want to echo what Don said. Thank you so much. You guys have been a wonderful team to work with and we're very grateful for your support. And it's been fabulous getting to know your residents. The residents of North Las Vegas are incredible people and the families that came through the doors of SNUMA changed my life forever, so I'm really grateful for that opportunity.
Just one more quick thing. Don and I had the pleasure of sharing, discussing last week on a national level with the National Charter School Conference and they were very, very impressed. We shared our video and everything that we did with SNUMA just to discuss the innovative ideas that we were able to produce here in North Las Vegas. So thanks for that opportunity, Don.
Would you invite yourself to the center and your children with you? Let's take a picture together. Come on, yeah. Come on. I'll be the big kid. Ready, here we go. One, two, and three. One, two, and three. Very good. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
beautiful, their beautiful mother. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you. We're going to move on to council items now. Councilman Barone.
Thanks, Mayor. I really, I appreciate that. And by the way, as a 27-year educator, I'm actually very, I'm nice and surprised by just how effective our SNUMA was and my special congratulations to everybody involved, including the families and the children. Just real quick, Harkey Park is almost ready. It's very close to being presented back to the city and of course, we're planning on a fantastic celebration, so please keep your ears and eyes open for that. And our very good friend, our very good friends there at Republic Services and the city of North Las Vegas, we're offering a very special thing to help promote a community clean, a clean community, and that's, hey, we're doing a bulk pickup day tomorrow, June 17th. So our residents in College Park, Tonopah Park, and of course, Arrowhead Acres, all encouraged to leave bulky items, that dresser that you put away a couple of years ago on the back patio, intending to refinish. And then finally, your wife finally told you, hey, get rid of that thing, and then you had no place to take it. Definitely put it on the curb, again, for our friends in the community here at Republic Services. Thank you very much for helping us out with that, Republic Services, and I'm looking forward to having a cleaner community. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me first start. We're a little ways to go with this Armed Forces and Military Veterans Appreciation Day coming up October 16th, which is a Saturday at Craig Ranch Regional Park. We didn't have our event last year because of COVID, so, but this year is going to be an amazing event out there. You'll be hearing more about it, so of course, it's open to the public as well. It's all free, free entertainment, but of course, we want our veterans, military, and our first responders and their families to attend. Secondly, let me mention that we are having a back-to-school event with our police department on July 24th at Craig Ranch Regional Park, and that'll be between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM, and you'll be hearing more about that as well. Last but definitely not least, I don't think I have to mention to anybody how hot it is outside. It's gotten so hot, the numbers don't even respond on my phone anymore. So, and it doesn't seem like it's going to be cooling down anytime soon. And I'm bringing this up because it's very important that if you have animals, if you know anybody that does have animals, that these animals need to be taken care of outside. They're not to be left outdoors without shade, without cover, without a house of some sort. And when the temperature rises above 105, they're supposed to have a cooling system, a mista system on them. So, you know, if you have a pet, that's your responsibility to do that. Our staff took a lot of time this past year in redoing and tweaking our ordinances over here to make it more pet-friendly and safer for our little animal friends. And with that, of course, comes penalties with the not applying common sense when you have an animal, just like having a child. So I urge you, please, if you have a pet, bring him in, provide the mista cooling systems out there. And of course, if you see anybody that's not doing that, feel free to call 911. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very important there. Councilman Black.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Even though it's incredibly hot this Saturday at 8:00 AM at Nicholas Flores Park, which is on Alexander and Allen, just between Silver Mesa Rec Center and Brunner Elementary School, I'll be hosting a park cleanup. If you haven't visited Nicholas Flores Park, it's a beautiful little neighborhood park. It's five acres, has lots of beautiful trees, shade, walking paths, and what we're going to do is partner with our great partner and good friend, Get Outdoors Nevada, to do some sprucing up, cleaning, some basic trimming, trash pickup, and some picnic table painting. So far, I have about three dozen volunteers signed up. Since we want to do it in a condensed fashion before it gets hot from 8:00 to 9:00, encourage anyone who would like to come out and help. I'll have lots of cold liquid to drink and we'll get in and make the park look really nice for those that like to use that park. And also, even though the librarians all left, Forrest is still here and I would be remiss if I didn't thank the eight individuals who last spring went for my crazy idea that I pitched as a member of the Board of Health at the Health District to convert librarians into contact tracers. I sat with contact tracers for disease investigation for half a day and my head hurt so bad. That is an incredibly difficult, challenging, tedious, labor-intensive job that not anyone can just really roll off the couch and do. We had eight librarians pivot from their normal job of being librarians and signed up and helped out with that very, very critical endeavor at the right time when we needed it the most, when we were trying to scale up our disease surveillance capacity within our community at the beginning of the pandemic. So Forrest, please convey to those individuals a depth of gratitude from the community and from the Health District and from me personally for going for that harebrained idea that I had for them.
Thank you very much. Councilman Goins Brown, Councilwoman Goins Brown, pardon me.
Forrest, I'd also like to add that we received so many thank you emails from our residents about the quality of services that they receive from the staff, that they got to talk to a person if they called or vice versa, it wasn't a machine or go to an answering service, and that their concerns, their questions are answered and they just put a little comfort and ease in people who are already stressed out. So thank you again for that. I had the pleasure of attending a ribbon cutting on Saturday for, it's called Carrying Hands Adult Day Services, which is very, an underserved area, not just in North Las Vegas, but across the state. And the owner-operator Ann Williams decided to open this business after 30 years' experience working with adults with disabilities. And so she provides services to adults with intellectual and physical disabilities and helps support these individuals to increase their independence, their social skills, their support to maintain abilities that they already have and to enhance their ability to have a quality of life that they would not get. And a lot of parents that were there just said how they always got turned away at other facilities and so they're so grateful to have this business to open here in North Las Vegas. And they're located right on Rancho, very close to the North Las Vegas Airport, so we welcome them and look forward to what they're going to bring to the community.
That's your report. Thank you very much. You guys are out there in the district working hard. Moving on to public forum, this time set aside for comment on posted agenda items. A public forum excludes discussion on public hearings, which will be heard later and separately. So if you want to speak in any items listed under the consent agenda, business, or ordinances by an election, now is that time. I have one card here, Cornelo Bernhall, please come forward. You wanted to talk to us about item number 10 and number 15, so go ahead.
I mean also, item number one, Cosello Barnhill III, North Las Vegas, 89030. Again, I advocate for four minutes rather than three minutes. You know, I understand that everybody has time, you know, but unlike politicians and associated disciplines, you know, I like using precise speech that doesn't emphasize on persuasiveness and emotional rhetoric, you know. I've seen that the contract on number 10, we're specifically focusing on the tennis court. I haven't been to the park in a while, so I'm not sure, but I think you guys should also focus on that racetrack, you know. I use that quite frequently when, before the lockdown happened and it has potholes all over the place. It's like, it's not immediately dangerous, you know, nobody's going to trip and break their neck, but it is extremely uncomfortable if you continuously use it and then it just degrades your posture when you're running, you know. It may have some unintentional consequences on our personal health. Then also for number 13, for this inter-local contract, is this just a renewal for previous things? Because I'm pretty sure North Las Vegas, NLVPD and LVMPD, they've been working together like butt buddies, you know, when they're doing operations part and fist, they're working real extensively together for that, other things like that. So I'm not, I'm not sure what this is for.
That is correct.
Okay.
And well noted on the park, we are doing a lot more work on that park in the next little while. We've got money for it.
Okay, okay. Just one more thing on number 13. I kind of denounced the unholy union between NLV and PD and LVMPD. LVMPD, they have some serious problems with their logistics, you know. That DA investigation that took down some of the criminals from the New Mexico gang that were slinging shit in here and then laundering into our real estate, they, they were, some of the services that LVMPD were infiltrated and consequently, the information leaked to some of the criminals and he was able to escape case during 2014, 2015 and shit like that, you know. And then also in addition, they had, their behavior is trash, absolute trash. They use coerciveness and power of the law, under the color of the law, as means of de-escalation, you know. It's not right, depriving people of rights.
In our, in our city, North Las Vegas, we're responsible, but you might want to go over to the city of Las Vegas and talk to them about that. They have the sheriff and the police department over there, that's their jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Moving, anybody else want to come up, say to City Council on anything? Saying then, we'll close the public comment forum. Moving on to the agenda.
Item one, approve City Council regular meeting agenda for June 16th, 2021. Mayor and Council, staff recommends that item number 38 be continued to July 21st, 2021, and that item number 44 be continued to July 7th, 2021. With those changes, we recommend the agenda to be approved as amended.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Move to approve as amended.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to the consent agenda.
Mayor and Council, the consent agenda consists of items number two through 23. And it's our recommendation to approve it as amended, approve it as published, sorry.
Thank you very much. Council, any comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve.
Move to approve consent.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to public hearings.
Mayor and Council, item 24, approve DA 022021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3078, amending ordinance number 2672, adding parcel 1.1 into the boundaries of Park Highlands West, DA 022021, Valley Vista, parcel 1.1, amending the land use plan for Park Highlands West, DA 022021, Valley Vista, parcel 1.1, amending the permitted use table for parcel 1.1 and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you. Mr. Gronauer, before you start, I want to publicly apologize to you. I got a little frustrated with the paperwork handling at the last meeting. And in a sense, I left my cool demeanor and said I wasn't very happy. And I appreciate you not taking that personally and representing that I'll do better in the future. So I'm going to open this up to you, and then we'll go to public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. First and foremost, Mayor, you're always cool. So what happened two weeks ago is totally fine. Just quickly, before I get into that, as I mentioned to you two weeks ago, and you know this is very true, that D.R. Horton did not control the application because they're the applicant, not the property owner. And my representations were 100% accurate. And I told you in two weeks from now, or two weeks from last week, that I'd either be standing up here doing a presentation with the deal done between the property owner and the applicant, or we'd be withdrawing it. So the good news is I'm standing up here, making the presentation. The deal was done, as I represented truthfully two weeks ago, that this stuff would be done. So thank you very much. That's business, totally have the respect of everybody. And the cool thing is, I was thinking about this driving here. Seven years ago, this master plan community was being divided into Valley Vista and Tulley Springs. And tonight, I'm talking about this part here on Valley Vista. As a matter of fact, seven years ago, it'll be June 18th, on Friday, is the seven exact years when we actually did that separation. And one of the things that happened is this, the property owner on this did not want to be a part of what we called Park Highlands West at that point in time. So they were not a part of the development agreement, a part of the celebration as we moved along. And there was nothing that was developed out in this area at that point in time because they didn't want to come in, because they didn't want to pay for their fair share for the police, for the fire, for open space, and all that stuff. And we went on for seven years in arguing that. D.R. Horton has come in and has developed Valley Vista. By the time when they get out of Valley Vista, you're going to have hundreds of millions of dollars of investment that they've made in to this master plan community. Lennar Homes is a partner in this also. They've done a tremendous job. Your staff has done a tremendous job in working on the issues that are related to Valley Vista. So now I get to this piece of property here. This is 20 acres. It came in currently planned in zone for commercial uses. This is the land use plan, as I show you up in this area, for commercial uses. What has happened over the last several years is commercial has been contracted throughout the valley. You have e-commerce sales that continue to explode year after year after year. Unfortunately, brick and mortar stores are shrinking. Amazon has taken over the world. Like it or not, more and more people shop online. So you don't see those 20, 40-acre commercial shopping centers and sites. As a matter of fact, what you have down the road on Decatur, if you look at Decatur in 215, you have a Costco, you have a Walmart on the other side. I've zoned the 40-acre Walmart Supercenter that's there, the Costco that's there. You have Winco, which is on the other side of the, which is on the south side of 215 in Decatur. So you have a commercial hub that's there, you have a commercial hub in Decatur. So you have grocery stores, you have those commercial areas that service areas that include here. The truth of the matter is, if we were able to do commercial on this property, you would see commercial by now. That's not the case. But the best thing that we've come in with is, and with thanks with Councilman Black's leadership, is we're coming in here with a different plan. This is a part of the 20 acres. With your approval tonight, we'd have this hard corner for about five acres for commercial, still plan for commercial in this area. And these are single-family detached homes, excuse me, attached homes, townhomes for D.R. Horton. It's a for-sale product, even though it's under multifamily. It's because of the, our density is about 15 units an acre. They do a tremendous job here, and that's what they're proposing to do in this area. We do feel that this five-acre site will still produce some form of commercial. But with Councilman Black's leadership, one thing that's going to happen, and I want this on the record because of his direction and along with your staff, when we get Park Highlands approved, there are certain uses that were allowed as of right, which means we didn't have to come to the City Council and get approval. When we drafted that agreement, and what we put on this 20 acres, a tavern was one of the uses that was allowed as right. You know, across the street on Decatur and Grand Teton, which is a northeast corner, is the neighbors in that area fought a tavern, fought a convenience store, they fought commercial, even the mini storage, what my clients tried to put there at one time. So we know the commercial and those types of uses are a concern to the neighbors in the area. Approval of this application tonight will remove the tavern as of right. And that's again, with the leadership of the councilmen in this area, these are some of the changes that you get. So the bottom line is, there's a trend out there, which is no different from reducing commercial. There are office space and commercial are being less. What you see is that there is a housing need in the southern Nevada. This helps fill that void for the housing need. So your planning commission recommended approval. Your staff has recommended approval of these changes. I could go on and on, but I think I'll stop right here, right now, in case there's somebody else that may have some comments to it, or if you have some additional questions. But overall, this is good for the community, and it's good for the master plan itself. And then more importantly, we removed something, as I said, that's been a thorn in the side for the city and for us for many years. And we can then take that money that we otherwise probably would have never got from the property owner, and we're using that to the community itself and our master plan community.
Thank you for that presentation. You're right. I'll go ahead and open this up to public hearing now. I have two people who would like to speak on this. Ian Brown, please come forward. I know you've been monitoring this quite closely. And Ms. Amy Whitlock, would you like to come down, Ms. Amy? And you're speaking for 24, which also includes 25.
Right.
Okay, so we'll just do one presentation and one public hearing. I'll ask for a public hearing anyway, but go ahead.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Thanks so much for the opportunity to come up here and share as community members and neighbors our thoughts on the application by D.R. Horton. We, as neighbors, support this application. We don't think that it's ideal in the eyes of all community members, but weighed against alternatives, we think it's a pretty good proposal by D.R. Horton. At the planning commission meeting several weeks ago, there were a couple of residents who spoke against the application because they expressed that they wanted commercial amenities available in closer proximity than the 215, which is a couple of miles south. What they were hoping for or wanting was idealistic, I feel, more than realistic. The type of commercial development they'd like to see on this 21-acre parcel is going to go there if businesses decide that it makes economic sense for them to go there, not if neighbors want them to go there. And with Tulley Springs Fossil Beds National Monument and Ice Age Fossils State Park protecting most of the land north of Horse Drive and north of Iron Mountain Road, there isn't going to be development, residential development ever, that will provide the number of rooftops, in my opinion, that businesses would require to build the stores and things that community members would like on that parcel. So with that said, we like the idea that 16 and 1/2 acres of this parcel be converted to a residential product. Of course, we love low-density residential. We love, you know, 21-acre lots, but we also realize that that's not realistic. A couple of neighbors approached me and were opposed to this. And when I sort of gave them some more information, they actually changed their mind and said, well, that's not so bad. High density, I think, has a cap of 25 dwellings per acre. Mr. Gronauer mentioned that it's more like 15. So really, we feel like the pros of this application and proposal outweigh the cons. And I'd like to publicly share my support of D.R. Horton's application. Thanks for hearing me.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Ms. Whitlock.
So I would just echo what Ian Brown said also, my support of this application for D.R. Horton. I think, as he has said, there is, there's already commercial out there that is built that isn't being used. And so adding more commercial would just result in empty buildings. And as a community, that isn't what we want or need. And so putting residential there, especially residential that maybe isn't, as he said also, ideal in low density, but residential that isn't full capacity, high density, I think it's a good compromise and something that will be good for our community. I also 100% support there not being a tavern anywhere near my house. So I want to add publicly that I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlock. I think that has been readily notified to the City Council. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this issue? Is there anybody on the phone?
No, Mayor, but I do have to read something into the record.
Okay.
We did receive over 140 emails in opposition to this, to the both items. Some of the reasons for the opposition was they want to keep the residential aspect of the community. It's a suburban area, not an urban-style living area surrounded by commercial real estate and businesses. The town and valley do not need more apartments, would rather see a grocery store and a few small businesses. They don't want high-density dwellings built among single-family homes. The proposed development will decrease property values. It's a rural area with horses and never intended to be high density. Don't have the services and infrastructure to support the high-density development. Will lead to a rise in property crimes and stretch the police department thin. Rezoning to high density will increase noise levels. They're worried about the area changing from homeowners to renters. And they feel that D.R. Horton misrepresented stating that the green spaces and parks would be exclusively private, which is not the case.
Thank you very much. Councilman Black, I'm going to close the public hearings. It's always on the phone or no one is in the audience who wants to speak on this and give you a chance on this.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. First of all, I want to say, I read through those emails that came in. I've spoken to the residents that are here in person on a number of occasions about this particular proposal as well as others in the area. And I just wanted to express my gratitude to the residents who do take the time to follow along with the initiatives that are going on and the proposals, and to reach out and to share their thoughts and opinions. I took note of kind of, our city clerk just kind of condensed what those concerns were. And I took those and evaluated them for myself. And one thing I will speak to that has already been mentioned by Mr. Gronauer as well as the residents that spoke is the fact that there's already a tremendous amount of grocery and retail in the area. There are six really reasons that would preclude a developer from coming north. It's kind of a wall of grocery stores, if you will, right there at Decatur and 215. You know, you mentioned Walmart and Costco. That's 1.8 miles from the corner of Grand Teton and Decatur. Smiths at Decatur and Anne is 2.8 miles. Walmart, or Winco and Sprouts is 2.3 miles. And then if you wanted to go into Aliante, it's 3.8 miles to there at the 215 and Aliante Parkway. So really, there is an ample amount of retail and grocery opportunities for the residents, current residents as well as the residents of the Valley Vista that's being developed. The thing that I wanted to know the most about is the crime proposal, or the idea of increased crime. And in order for me to do that, I looked at a like property within Aliante. It's called Courts at Aliante. It's on the corner of Deer Springs and Aviary. That's been there for about 15 years. It's triplex, just like this, 125 units. I believe it was developed by D.R. Horton as well.
Yes.
So what they're proposing here on this corner is really the latest upgraded iteration of that that was built 15 years ago in Aliante. It's 125 triplexes, 375 units on 30 acres. So it's at about 12.6 units per acre, where what I believe is proposed here is about 14.9 units per acre. So really, the density is very similar. But what was important for me to find out was what's the crime history in that quote-unquote "higher-density" neighborhood? So I reached out to the police chief, and the police staff generated a report for the last 18 months. And I can share that report with anyone who wants it. But really, the synopsis is, and the opinion from the police chief, is that is a low-crime area, the Courts at Aliante. So I would foresee, if you forecast what that history looks like onto this one, I foresee that this would also be a low-crime area. It's not for rent. It's, they're not apartments, they're townhomes for sale. And I believe that it'll attract a wide variety of good residents for the city of North Las Vegas that both work here and want to raise a family here. And it's, I think, an addition to the blend of housing offerings that are within the portfolio of Valley Vista, so.
Thank you. Council, we've heard Councilman Black. Is there anybody else in the council? Councilman Barone?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think I'm going to support the councilman on this one. I know the residents are here, and of course, when they think commercial, they're thinking 7-Elevens. You just heard that the councilwoman was at ribbon cutting for a senior adult daycare facility. That's commercial. You might be, you might want to think about what you watch community to look like. Not right now, but five and 10 years down the line. What you're, what we're actually asking sometimes, if you go all residential, is to paint yourself in a corner where you're not allowing things that, like right now, you may not think that it's going to be all that amenable to you. But five or 10 years down the line, you might want, quite frankly, a small dental office, a small chiropractic center, a small daycare, adult daycare center, especially if you're going to have your parents living with you. I think it's, sometimes, you know, I was, I had the stones on the radio there on the way over here. You don't always get what you want, but you can get what you need. And that, this is what, I think, this deal that you have, that D.R. Horton is putting together here for the residents, I think it meets the needs on both ends. And Councilman, congratulations on providing the leadership to make this happen.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this? So Mick Jagger says yes. And then, okay, I just want to make sure the Rolling Stones are supporting this. So Madam City Attorney, there were some contractual concerns with the city and stuff in the last proposal. Are you satisfied with everything that's going on with this? Because I know there was an ending date that was farther down the line and stuff like that.
Mayor and Council, I'm not aware of anything that's changed, I guess, in terms of what's been proposed in the agenda, so.
So that October date that we talked about, that was pushed out, is not a...
That is something that the city is not involved in.
Okay, all right. I'm just making sure it's okay with you. All right, thank you. Well, seeing that we have, we've had discussion, I'm going to go to Councilman Black and ask for a motion.
Okay, thank you. So taking this large 21-acre parcel, merging it into the master plan community with this proposal, creating, I think, a decent blend of a residential offering for sale as well as retaining some acreage for neighborhood commercial to add services to the residents that live in that immediate area. It makes a lot of sense to me. So with that, I would like to make a motion to approve DA 022021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3078.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to 25, it'll be the same presentation, Mr. Gronauer.
Incorporate everything. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor and Council, item 25, approve ZN 062021 and pass and adopt ordinance number 3078. Mayor, council, item twenty-five, approve ZN oh-six twenty-twenty-one and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty-seventy-four and ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately sixteen point five acres from an MPC C-one master plan community neighborhood commercial district to an MPC RZ twenty-five master plan community residential zone up to twenty-five dwelling units per acre. ZN oh-six twenty-twenty-one, Valley Vista parcel one point one for property generally located at the southeast corner of Decatur Boulevard and Grand Teton Drive and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing. At this time, anybody would like to come up and speak on item twenty-five? Seeing no one coming forth, we'll close the public hearing. The chair will call for a motion.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. If I may, I just wanted to add one more thing. I've been watching and monitoring the progress in Valley Vista for the last few years. As Mr. Gronauer mentioned, we have D.R. Horton as the master developer. And then we also have Lennar, who's a great builder, who's building some nice product out there. D.R. Horton, if you look at the off-site improvements and the roads that are going in and the traffic signals, Decatur going north, if you go past Farm and then you come up to this parcel, D.R. Horton, of their own volition, completed the pavement, curb and gutter well before, I believe, any of this purchase negotiation was done. So they did that on their own dime with the hope and intent to be reimbursed at some point. I just thought that was a real great gesture to be able to complete that roadway all the way north on Decatur. So if you'll convey to your client how much I appreciate that, that effort. Also with that, I would like to make a motion to approve ZN zero-six twenty-twenty-one and pass an adopt ordinance number three-zero-seven-four.
Thank you, council. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Take care.
Item number twenty-six, conduct public hearing and pass an adopt ordinance, resolution number two-six-six-four, resolution of the City Council of the City of North Las Vegas. Nevada Year End Augmentation of FY twenty-twenty-twenty-one Budget, Mayor and Council. We have our budget director here to make a brief presentation.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman and Councilman. I'm here to present the year-end budget augmentation. We have a presentation. If I can make this work. The first two slides are the required information to tell you why we have to do this according to law. And slide number three talks about the types of items that would result in a budget augmentation. Grants, expenditures, operating unknowns, forfeiture funds and capital project rollovers, which we've experienced all of this. This augmentation represents the period from January one through June. We'd like to say June thirtieth. It's actually June seventh because we're still not quite done yet. Moving to slide four, there's a brief history of the augmentation. You'll see the mid-year, the bottom, second to the bottom line mid-year presentation that we came previously for fifty-nine million. And currently, this augmentation totals twenty-one million. Moving to the next slide on slide five tells you the effect on the total budget. The adopted budget of seven hundred and twenty-seven point five million has been augmented by the fifty-nine mid-year and another twenty-one totaling eight hundred and eight point five eight million dollars for the year. Slide six gives you a summary of the types of items that are in this augmentation. Slide seven gives you in detail of all the items that are in the augmentation. The largest items you can see is a bond issuance for twenty-three million dollars. And the reversal of the COVID budget restrictions that we initially put into the budget for this year. Revenue was better than expected, and so that has been reversed, put back into the budget. With these items, I'm open to any questions and recommend approval of the augmentation.
Thank you. So this augmentation, when we finish it, we're gonna vote on it here. This goes, follows the budget that we sent to the state already, and they get a copy of this. Is that how this works?
They will get a copy of this augmentation as soon as we're done, yes.
Yeah.
We have sent the next year's FY twenty-two budget to the state already.
Okay, that's what I was getting at. Council, I know this is dry stuff, and we have a fantastic financial team, but do you have any questions? And we're always in compliance with the states. We appreciate you for that. So seeing that we have no questions for you, we're gonna call for a motion to pass and adopt resolution twenty-six sixty-four. Counsel? Move to approve. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item twenty-seven, approve AMP oh-four twenty-twenty-one CRMM for applicant CRMM LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from community commercial to heavy industrial located at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Christie Lane.
Thank you. Well, we have a presentation here. Welcome.
Good evening, Your Honor. Council members, my name is Tony Celeste, address nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. As you can see from the overhead, we have just shy of twelve acres located on the south side of Tropical, bounded to the north by I fifteen. To the west of us is the developing Maverick Gas Station. And what you can see, the trend in this area, already some existing and built-out warehouse moving towards heavy industrial use. Right now, our site is planned community commercial, and we would like to continue with the trend of the heavy industrial. So we're asking for that to be amended to the heavy industrial. And we appreciate staff's recommendations, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Did you have any ideas what you're gonna do with this property?
We do not have an end-user identified yet, but I know to the east of us is a combination of Van Trust and Cap Rock with their eighty-plus acres and, I don't know if there's an opportunity for that, but certainly just trying to identify end-users and especially with the trend moving away from kind of those, the commercial or the large shopping centers and things of that nature, so more storage is needed. So just more looking towards the future.
Yeah, just unique pieces of property there, so. So that's our presentation. I'm gonna open up the public hearing real quick. Thank you, Tony. Is there anybody here that would like to come and discuss this project with the city council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing and move on to Councilman Barone.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you very much. Again, you know, we're seeing quite a trend to, no, to, this is, it's a job creation zone in and of itself with the infrastructure that's been brought in, access to the east side of I fifteen. This area is going exactly as we had planned, I think. And I think moving this from commercial to even heavy industrial, it fits in with everything else that's going in the area. And I think for that reason, I would urge my colleagues here to approve this one.
Thank you. Counsel, are any other comments or questions on this? We have a motion on the floor, seeing none. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item twenty-eight, approve ZN oh-eight twenty-twenty-one and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty-seventy-nine and ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately eleven point two-seven plus minus acres from a C-two general commercial district to an M-two general industrial district. ZN oh-eight twenty-twenty-one CRMM for property located at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Christie Lane and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you, Tony.
Good evening again, Your Honor, Tony Celeste, council members. My address is nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. I would incorporate my previous statements and just add that this is a companion item to it and asking for the matching zoning to the master plan.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who'd like to speak for or against item number twenty-eight? Please come forward. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. And Councilman Barone?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor. And again, this is yet more diversification by the, by the city of North Las Vegas, offering to, not just here to our residents, but to the residents of the entire valley. With that, of course, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Thank you.
Mayor, council, item twenty-nine, approve AMP oh-five twenty-twenty-one Tropical Assembly two-point-oh for applicant Cap Rock Partners LLC to request an amendment to the master plan of streets and highways to remove Azure Avenue between Madge Lane and Beasley Drive.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, John Sullivan, nineteen eighty Festival Plaza Drive. I'm putting up the site plan that's showing, the companion item will come up as number thirty is the next item, which is going to be the zoning of these three properties, so.
Can you put it on a wish as placed document, so we can see it?
Oh.
There you go.
Is that better?
Yep.
And so for this one, it's a request as part of the amendment of the master plan for streets to vacate Azure between Beasley and and Madge. And so as this property gets brought into that accumulation, the street's no longer necessary. And if you want, I'll just go ahead and present the whole thing so we can incorporate.
Yeah.
And then the companion is the zoning request change from open land to M-two. Again, this is four point seven-six acres, of which will become part of a twenty-acre accumulation by Cap Rock. Cap Rock has tentatively mapped the eighty-five acres just to the west of that as well. So as part of, kind of Tony being on the, on the far end of that, really going to have an area that's, it's gonna be some crazy, exciting things that are gonna occur in North Las Vegas.
Well, that's a crazy, exciting area too, isn't it? So we appreciate that. So this is out in the industrial area. Council, Councilman Barone, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, Mayor, you know, I remember a long time ago when I was easing into my position here as council. And you explained to me the difference between real estate and land. And, you know, when we came in, this was land. It was, we didn't have services to there. There was no, there was no access, no water. We, we had predictions that, of course, would wind up with hundreds of millions of dollars worth of investment in this area if we could get services there. And with a lot of our regional partners, we had, and a lot of people got thanked, from our Congresswoman Titus to our friend at the county, friends of the state, and our entire staff that made the infrastructure into this area possible. And, you know, with the good vision, you know, exactly, we, you know, we have Mr. Sullivan representing Cap Rock and, again, so many other people coming in to invest in our city. Well, all that housing that we're putting in, we're gonna have a way to pay for the services to be able to send people out whenever they need. And whether it's gonna be to repair lights, to fix roads, or in the off-chance we need police or fire services, we'll be able to pay for that. And Mr. Sullivan and his team, they represent investors who are gonna help the city moving forward. I, I, I'm very thankful, you know, that we're actually having this conversation now. And while I think when it's time, I know I'll definitely be urging, again, my colleagues and yourself to please support this program. And of course, if we have anybody in the public who'd like to come in and ask any particular questions, you know, what a vacation means, whatever, I'll invite them. But I know where I stand on this one. I think it's a fantastic project. Yes, that'd definitely be my motion.
Thank you very much. We built the houses out to you, John, so we have the workforce coming towards you out there. It looks like you can't tell us what the project is at this stage because it's, you're just building it and then you lease it out later. Is that how you're gonna do it?
Yeah, I think there will be at some point an announcement of projects, but it's not today.
I'm not good at that. I tried. Councilman, did you have a question? No, okay. No, I did public hearing and I closed it. Maybe I didn't. Let me open for public hearing one more time. Is anybody here for the public who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll, sir, welcome. I didn't see a blue card from you or you were interested in this subject.
But I wanted to know, you're approving all this, these projects.
Could you state your name, could you state your name for the record?
My name is Michael Estrada.
Yeah.
Where are the jobs? Where are the manufacturing jobs? Where everything comes from China, we should be bringing manufacturing here instead of more rooftops. With more rooftops, there's more cars, there's more pollution, there's more people, right? That's my only comment.
The area where this building is going is all in our industrial area, and it will provide those jobs.
Mayor, and by the way, just to the point, when Amazon came in, I think they brought in five hundred jobs with them. And that's not me having to toot the horn. Around the corner from here, there's an Amazon last-mile center that'll bring in another three hundred jobs. And up the street, there'll be a certain, a certain center that'll be coming in, they'll have a hundred and twenty jobs. And so the jobs are coming, you know, and of course, we're not gonna get into all the difficulties that it is, you know, getting people to come out and be employed. But the jobs are coming, and there will be, there'll be some, I think, some balancing out as employers, you know, balance out wages. But, you know, we are laying out the foundation for employers to come in and bring jobs. And in time, I think we'll see other jobs, you know, industrial-type jobs that tend to pay a little bit more than service-type jobs come into the area, so, you know, to your point. So, yes, and with that also, the one thing that's really important, I alluded to, they're gonna be paying taxes on their, on their earnings, all these, whether it's Amazon or the future people who come into, into this, into this parcel. They'll be paying taxes to the city that we turn around and use to, of course, fund fire, police, roads, all the rest, everything else that goes with being a city. And we're in actually a very fortunate place to be able to be talking in such a manner. Nothing's perfect, and of course, we're always working towards, you know, creating a better community. But now we have the bedrock. So I thank you very much, though.
Would you state your motion one more time?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, council, item thirty, approve ZN oh-nine twenty-twenty-one and pass an adopt ordinance number thirty-eighty and ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately four point seven-six plus minus acres from an OL open land district to an M-two general industrial district. ZN oh-nine twenty-twenty-one Tropical Assembly two-point-oh for property located at the southwest corner of Azure Avenue and Beasley Drive and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. And Mr. Sullivan gave the presentation on item twenty-nine to cover item thirty. I'll open up the public comment. Anybody else like to speak on this? Please come forward. Any blue cards? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. The chair will take a motion.
Mayor, I'm happy to hear that Ward One is well-represented tonight, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote.
Well, I've gotta put a plug in here once in a while.
Items approved.
Mayor, council, item thirty-one, approve AMP oh-six twenty-twenty-one Centennial and I fifteen for applicant Kelly Lawson, Matter Acquisitions LLC to request an amendment to the comprehensive master plan to change the land use designation from resort commercial to heavy industrial located at the northwest corner of North Belt Road and Sloan Lane Alignments.
Thank you very much and welcome here this evening.
Good evening, Your Honor and Council, Lebanon Heaney, five-twenty South Fourth Street, representing the applicant. And with me is the applicant as well as the project engineer. I'm representing both items thirty-one and thirty-two, which are companion items, and I'll appreciate if it can be combined as one item. To present, this project consists of forty-two point seven acres located on the northeast corner of North Belt Road and Sloan Lane Alignments. It consists of two nine-hundred-thousand-square-foot-plus industrial distribution complexes. The first item, thirty-one, is an amendment to the Land Use Plan Comprehensive Plan from resort commercial to heavy commercial. The site, just going back... plan, from resort commercial to heavy commercial. The site, just going back to this again, the site is adjacent to the Nevada land, the state lands for the National Guard, both on the north and the west side. There's a small parcel adjacent to us that is private, but the remaining parcels to the northeast are also part of the state lands owned by Nevada Guard. Now, just so you know, we did hold a neighborhood meeting. Since all applicants to the south have similar zoning, no one showed up for the meeting. This application is by matter, and they've built similar projects north of Cheyenne near Simmons across from the North Las Vegas Airport. So it's a similar-type project. So that's on the comprehensive plan part, and I'll get to the zoning. So just reviewing the site, there are two industrial complexes. This is an example of the type of building, and this is the project that is already built in North Las Vegas across from the North Las Vegas Airport. It is similar. The intent of the amendment is to zone it to heavy industrial from C-two to build the project. So this is some example, and we would respectfully request that we keep the same color palette as what was done in on Cheyenne Avenue. With that said, I just need to thank your staff. They're amazing. They helped us with our project. They recommended approval, Planning Commission recommended approval, and the state actually sent a letter in support of the project stating specifically that this project was more compatible for the area than the resort commercial designation and the C-two zoning. With that said, I conclude my presentation for thirty-one.
Thank you, Ms. Levini. Stick around. We might have somebody from the public here. I'm going to, we have the presentation. I'm going to open it up for public comment now. Anybody? Blue cards? Anybody on the phone? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Brown, this is in your district.
Yeah, Mayor. Again, I thank you very much, Ms. Lawson for coming down. Again, this is another one of these projects that represents a fundamental shift that the city of North Las Vegas has been taking on, I think, as being a breadbasket for the entire valley. Of course, you know, originally it was zoned for a resort. But I would just like to point out that this last implosion caused by the COVID-nineteen, it left us, you know, we do have several gaming properties here, but two of them are even offline. And our residents who relied on employment there, they're flapping in the wind. Again, you know, as we said so years ago, we wanted to build out and do, move our city in a different direction, a direction that makes us more recession-proof, less dependent upon, you know, the gaming, the game industry. And this, I believe, if you have a good project coming in, I might point out, hey, we have a state-of-the-art facility coming into the area, Air Liquide. You know, they're actually pushing the boundaries, you know, of technology when it comes to hydrogen fuel cells and other associated. And then those are going to be pretty good, high-paying jobs. We're hoping that, of course, that the heavy industrial that does come in, and at this point, we don't know what it is, also brings, you know, more recession-proof, more away-from-gaming-type jobs. I think those totally fits in with the other heavy industrial in the area. And as for the color palette, I was kind of hoping for something a little bit more colorful, but if it's something that has to fit with our code and other parts of the city, well, I guess, again, I don't get what I, I may not get what I want, but we can get what the city needs. And that would also be my motion to approve.
Thank you. Counselor, any comments or questions on this item?
I just had one quick comment. The property on Cheyenne across from the airport is really a fantastic-looking property. I think it was nice. I mean, how do you make a distribution center or warehouse look pretty? It's hard to do, but it's just really a professional, attractive-looking, you know, streetscape. And it looks like, based on the signage there, you're attracting a wide variety of tenants in that facility. So I just wanted to say that I appreciate that particular one.
Thank you.
And it's a hundred percent leased up, so that's awesome.
I see no more comments or questions. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Mayor, Council, item thirty-two, approve ZN eleven twenty-twenty-one and pass and adopt ordinance number thirty-eighty-one, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately forty-two-point-seven plus-minus acres from a C-two general commercial district to an M-two general industrial district, ZN eleven twenty-twenty-one Centennial and I fifteen for property located at the northwest corner of North Belt Road and Sloan Lane Alignments and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you. While we have this, your woman, would you like to change the name of that street from North Belt Road? That's about an ugly street name, isn't it? We'll leave it alone, I guess. So I'm going to open up the public hearing now. Anybody come forth on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. The chair will take a motion.
Yeah, if we ever do get around to changing it, we do have the Army National Guard there. We could call it Hero Road. I'm just saying.
We have a motion.
Yeah, a humble addition to Ward One. And that's my motion.
Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to business.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Sorry, my paper was loading. Item number thirty-three, accept grant award in the amount of six-point-seven million from the U.S. Department of Treasury under the Emergency Rental Assistance Program and authorize city manager to designate executive the grant award documents and enter into agreement for local administration of funding.
Thank you, Council. Any comments or questions on it? If not, the chair will take a motion to set the grant award.
Move to approve.
Chairwoman, I mean, Councilwoman, discuss your vote. Items approved.
Item number thirty-four, presentation by Assistant City Manager Ellen Goldberg regarding the City of North Las Vegas Learn NLV Initiative and provide high-quality equitable education to every child in North Las Vegas.
Welcome, Ms. Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. I'm really excited to be here today. I'm going to be back often. So just to kind of frame this, I'll be introducing some really exciting, I think, developments on some education initiatives for the city of North Las Vegas. And as you all know, we've got a lot going on and a lot planned. And so we will, rather than put this all out at once, I'll be coming every month as we add new initiatives to our tool belt to improve outcomes for North Las Vegas kids and introduce each new initiative. So you'll get a little taste and an overview of why we're doing this, and then I'll be back again next month, if that's okay by you. So I'd like to introduce the community to Learn NLV, and that is the City of North Las Vegas's proposed educational initiative to reach every child in every neighborhood every day to provide them with a high-quality education here in North Las Vegas. And so really, it couldn't be a more fitting council meeting to present this. We heard and saw Dawn and Ashley and gave them our thanks and praise for helping council realize the vision of Snuma last year. And that really came out of the pandemic as a reaction. I know we heard from each of you looking outside at the Smith's parking lot to these kids trying to learn on hot blacktop and said, this is not acceptable. We won't stand for this in our community. And so that's where Snuma was born, and we saw such incredible results and got such great feedback from the families in the community that we're serving, that the calling cry was, keep it going and please do more. And so that's what brings us here today. So building on the positive momentum of Snuma, we now have Learn NLV to improve outcomes in North Las Vegas. And so there's three main posts and goals for Learn North Las Vegas. And like I said, over the next weeks, months, year, you'll be hearing a lot more about each of these. But just to give you a general overview, the first kind of bucket is to accelerate public schools. And just to be clear, the direction we have received as staff is, this is not to give a leg up or down to any existing institution. We want everyone to succeed. And as we found with Snuma, as you guys see every day in the community, there's no one-size-fits-all to any of the problems you're faced with as a council. And we know that to be true in education. So while one school or one teacher or one model may work fantastic for one child or one family, that might not be the case for a different family. And so really, we want a diversity of options because we have a diversity of families. And so the more options we can provide, the better match we can make so the right kid is in the right seat, getting the right results. And so that includes both public schools, traditional district schools, charter schools, private schools, micro schools. And so we've been having ongoing conversations with several leaders in the charter school and CCSD community to really understand what are the barriers to success that they are experiencing every day in North Las Vegas schools, so we can start to work with them to address those problems. The second bucket is increasing quality options. So that started with Snuma. We were able to provide a hundred high-quality seats to our North Las Vegas residents, and we're super proud of that work. The next step of that will be continuing to increase different kinds of models in our city. So introducing new charter schools, helping new charter schools and new operators launch, and even, you know, innovative and progressive models maybe that we haven't seen. We are open to ideas if there's data to back up that they work. And then the third, which I'll be telling you more about today, is to expand access and connection to quality seats. And so this is really education and advocacy for our community. This whole effort is based on feedback from the stakeholders and the people who need and use these services, i.e. your constituents. And so we want to make sure we're hearing from them and empowering them to make the best decisions for their families and for their children. So what does this all mean in terms of numbers and data? City Manager Junean has been very, very clear that we need to be able to return and report the success of these efforts in hard data. And so we wanted to come up with very trackable measures of, is this initiative successful? Do we continue? Do we double down? And we also want it to be durable. And if we don't know what it's doing, there's no way to make that, you know, council-proof or Dullen-proof or Ryan-proof. We want this, if it works, to last long into the future and serve generations to come. And so right now, and we talked about this a little bit at a previous meeting, right now, there's zero what we would call high-quality seats in North Las Vegas. What we consider to be high-quality seats and we'll call transformational seats are where seventy-five percent of students in a grade level meet the expectation for those grade levels. Zero right now. The best we do is about ten thousand of our almost fifty thousand students are in schools that are performing above the regional CCSD average. So that's all right, but we want better than that. Our kids deserve the best. And so the goal is, the goal really is a hundred percent of kids at grade level, but we're going to start at seventy-five. So zero right now by twenty-twenty-five, which is only four years away, we hope to pretty much double that. So from twenty-eight percent to fifty-nine percent, thirty-two hundred kids in that highest quality, you know, gold standard seats. But then another seventeen thousand in the high-performing by current today standard seats, and even more in transitional seats. So if you extrapolate, by twenty-twenty-five, if this works, we're halfway there. So by twenty-thirty, theoretically, we could have every child in North Las Vegas in a high-quality seat. And as you can see, it's not going to take years and years to get that. By twenty-twenty-two, we hope to already be well on the way to that goal. And how are we going to do that? Through Snuma, through some of the programs I'm about to tell you about, through work with CCSD and our charters, and also bringing in new leaders to launch new charters and new opportunities. So the program initiative that I'm going to talk about mostly today is our Parent Ambassador Program. And we're really proud of this. This is, I think, completely unique. I haven't heard of anything like it, certainly in Nevada, but even nationally, particularly from the city. So the Parent Ambassador Program, we are hiring and we have hired Snuma parents and caregivers. So we put a call out to all our Snuma families, asking if anybody needed employment opportunities. We know it's very important to both provide these services, but this is also job creation for our Snuma families. So the parents are getting some work, and then we're also helping people in our community navigate education. And so the Parent Ambassador Program, it's essentially a concierge service for families regarding education. So maybe you're new to the community, maybe you're native to the community, you just don't understand. It's really confusing. It's confusing if English is your native language. It's even more confusing if English is not your native language. And so we have bilingual employees who are walking parents and families through this program. And so basically, what do they do? They either make outgoing calls proactively through call lists that we've curated from customers, charter school waiting lists, different buckets of parents. And then also, we're receiving incoming calls. And so what these parent ambassadors do in real-time, one-on-one, live human contact, they'll walk your family through kind of an educational choose-your-own-adventure, if you will. And so nobody's going to say, you need to go to this school, or you need to go to this type of school. They're going to ask, you know, Mom, what's most important to you? And if she says maybe small class sizes, then they're going to explore the educational models that focus on class sizes. Maybe it's, you know, my kid doesn't do great with traditional learning. My kid wants to be a plumber or, you know, vocational. Okay, well, these are the kinds of schools, you know, magnets, charters, that we can point you to where those types of skills can be taught and that kind of, you know, certification can be gained. And from what we've heard from parents, they don't know how to navigate these systems. And so from there, once we identify the proper type of educational setting, we can help get that family in there. So maybe it's help with an application, maybe it's a zone variance, maybe it's, you know, a transportation barrier. Can we hook them up with a nonprofit to help get the kids to school? And so that's really the goal of the Parent Ambassador Program. We are just launching now. We've had a couple folks working for several weeks on this, just to work out the kinks as a pilot. And now we've got several of our Snuma teachers joining us for this during summer before they come back to us next year for Snuma. And so I'm really excited. We'll be gathering feedback. It's also another way to inform the other aspects of Learn NLV. With every phone call and every stakeholder that we talk to, we ask them, you know, what's working really well, what's not working really well, what does your family need? And that's what's helping to shape the rest of the Learn NLV initiative that you will hear about. I'll also point out, just on the heels of our Snuma presentation earlier, we are now open for intent to register for next year. We've already been working with our current Snuma families, but I just wanted to put it on the record that if anybody else who is a North Las Vegas resident or works in North Las Vegas is interested in finding out more about Snuma, please visit cityofnorthlasvegas.com and fill out an intent to register form. And so with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I read an article in the paper that Las Vegas was also considering moving in this direction also. So it has caught on. Your efforts, I can see, are leading the community. So, Council, any comments? Isaac, did you have a, Councilman Brown?
Yeah, you know, Mayor, of course, I'm still a classroom teacher, and I respect her highly. Of course, we have a retired educator and a wonderful colleague, Pamela Quinn Brown. I know she was probably, I was really happy that she took the lead in providing, you know, in helping to define what Snuma became. As someone who loves children and, of course, has so much experience with elementary kids, it was actually very fortunate for us to have her on the city council. As for my experience, Mayor, I can only say that I've had the most trying year in my twenty-seven years in education this last year. But as trying as was for me, I don't, I think I'm a little bit more lucid the last few days compared to three weeks ago. I can say it was way rougher on our children and the parents. The one huge determining factor in any child's education in their lives is in their lives is, of course, how much, uh, the parents can be engaged in their education. And Mayor, I, I think this will be a fantastic tool. I think it's very well thought out. And it will help the, uh, I, I think it's going to help a lot of our families. It's families that have not crossed the digital, the, the digital divide. And as shocking as that might seem to some people, we have still so many of our residents whose families have not crossed the digital divide. The kids, they know how to use their cell phones to go ahead and download video games. They can use computers, you know, to, to play video games and even meet up on there. They can do TikTok videos. But I found out a lot of my, a lot of my freshmen, and I was told that my freshmen would know how to use, uh, uh, their technology such as Google, uh, Google Docs. Then when I would ask them to get, I, I'd give a very simple assignment, create a slideshow, a three-slide slideshow using Google Docs, the presentation thing, the slideshow. So many of my, uh, 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 of my students could not do it. They didn't know how to save, uh, information to, uh, to Google Docs. They didn't know how to share with me. They couldn't download, you know, very simple instructions. The worst one was, Mayor, when, um, I had a, 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 a child that had not seen, he had not turned in anything the entire semester. And three weeks before the end of the semester, I finally got to meet the kid in person. And when I asked him, well, why haven't you done anything all year long? Um, tears flowed from him and I felt, you know, um, I, I, I felt bad. He couldn't log into his Chromebook. Very simply, he got one number wrong in his, in, in his student app. His, when I had spoken to his mother, I'm, I'm so sorry, I take that back. It's not his mother, his grandmother, who, uh, is raising him and his older bro. She couldn't help. They had no one to turn to in their family. And, uh, unfortunately, you know, uh, for a significant portion, it may not be fifty percent of our children, but for a significant portion of the children here in our community, they, their families have not crossed the digital divide. Um, I, 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 um, I will not speak, I'll, I'll not, um, render, uh, criticism, uh, to the school district as a teacher. I, 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 I know just how overwhelmed we are with, you know, you know, we're a social program as well, as well as being an educational program. But I think anything that we can do to, uh, render more assistance to our residents, help them bridge that, that, that gap. Uh, I can't think of a, of a, of a higher, um, calling, something, uh, more grand we can use. And again, with everything we're doing, this is the one thing I think we're taking on as a city that I, 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 I wholly, um, I, I wholly support. I know that it's, it's going to take a little bit of, um, of, of resources, but I think will be well-spent. It, it, it is money well-invested in our community. And i, if, and I, of course, I'm hoping that our friends over in Las Vegas also can do something similar. Perhaps our friends in Clark County as well, just fill in all the gaps that quite frankly, the Clark County School District, you know, cannot do. I mean, as, as big as they are, you know, uh, they still, they have gaps, uh, uh, and, and everything that they do. And I think we, we can probably make a difference in, uh, many families' lives. I know I was a long-winded mayor, uh, on, on this one, and I apologize. But thi, this is one where I really, I, I mean, I, 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 I wish we would have had something like this, that I could have brought, brought these, uh, children in with their families in small groups to educate them. I probably wouldn't have had kids, you know, um, coming in three weeks before the end of the school year, not having turned anything in.
Well-spoken, and that's the actual truth in a lot of cases. Um, is there any other questions, Ms. Goldberg, at this time? If not, this is a presentation only, we don't need to vote on it. I think everybody's pretty satisfied with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Um, moving on.
I just want to add a couple of things to, to the presentation. I want to thank, um, Dellen for her work on this. We've been working with outside stakeholders on putting this together. Uh, Councilman Goins-Brown has been huge in, in working with staff and making sure that this is, um, being done right and providing resources. You know, the pandemic taught us lots of things. I think there's some serious lessons that, as I sit here, we learned from the pandemic. The first one we learned is, you know, there was nowhere to hide if you were a person in a leadership position. You either led or you melted away. And we saw that. We saw that across the state, across the country and our community, that, that some people stepped up that were in leadership positions and others just hid. And they were paralyzed and didn't know what to do. Um, I think another big lesson we learned from the pandemic is the gulf between those that are fortunate and those that are not fortunate, those that are, that are the haves and those that are the have-nots is real. It's wide. Um, and there, it exposed that at all levels, um, from health outcomes to education outcomes, um, to access to health, to access to education. And it exposed that. And so I think that this is, uh, a couple of lessons that we learned. I mean, we had to fight for every single dollar that we got from CARES. We didn't wake up with a check deposited in our bank account like other entities did. We had to fight for it. And even other entities that should have fought with us. We had to bring them along to fight with us because they were willing to just take a zero. But we knew with our community, we couldn't do that. And another thing we really learned as we got into this space of education was we had to educate, if you will, um, parents. We had, as we worked with parents and talked with them, we learned a lot of the stuff that you just mentioned, Councilman, which is people just don't know. And we had, we learned an awful lot about some of the root causes of education problems within our community. And I think this is a beginning. This is just the first of, of three main parts, but this is the very beginning to start tackling, or at least looking at one of those issues. And in true North Las Vegas fashion, what we're doing and what Dellen, her team is, is doing and engaged in is experimentation. Seeing what works, um, with, with hopes that just as we've seen, um, other times, things that we experiment on or work on and, and that they work. There's no better flattery than when other, other places, other entities, other states, other people follow. And so this is a, a great step in doing this. I want to thank her team, I want to thank those stakeholders. I know some of them are listening to this, that, uh, it's, it's going to be exciting. This is just the first of three things, the, uh, three major parts that we're going to be bringing forward. And it's thoughtful. Um, some of it's already been, uh, experimented on a little bit in the background. But we'll see how this evolves so we can try and, and provide a, a better service and identify some of the challenges that we found in the pandemic and start tackling those.
Thank you. I, Ms. Goins-Brown, you've read this from the state to the national, um, presentation and presence. Do you want to speak on this a little bit for Dellen?
Well, I'd just like to just say thank you, first of all, to our staff, but more importantly, to our parents, because it was a huge trust issue on the onset of this. You know, why would I pull my kid out of, of a comprehensive campus to bring them to a micro school hub program? And so, um, once parents were educated and got the information that they needed, they understood what we were trying to do. And basically, this is a continuation out of the need. Because if there wasn't a need, we wouldn't continue with this. And so our parents are pleased with it and so much that they do want us to continue. They do not want Snuma to end, and so we're going to make that happen for them. Then when we reached out and, like, our, our Learn NLV, Every Child, Every Neighborhood, Every Day, it encompasses every single person in the city of North Las Vegas. No matter who you are, what you are, we wanted to make sure that we touched on every single neighborhood in, in our city. And putting together the principal focus group, it was interesting that they were very excited to participate, um, to share their thoughts and ideas and to be a part of this. And because I say, well, if you said yes, that means you're ours forever. And so they were very grateful to participate and shared some pretty phenomenal ideas. Um, and on the call with the charter school, the National Charter School Conference, we had a, a parent on there from, from Detroit. And the one thing she stressed is what, how important public-private partnerships are, and they did not have that there. Because, like you said, parents did not know. Even though they're running their small micro schools, they still don't have the resources that we have with our, with our partnership with Don and his group. And so that's extremely, extremely important because it just puts all the puzzle pieces together and it gives parents more to, to know and to grow on. And so, um, we're looking forward to continuing Snuma for as long as our parents need us and want us and just to grow as much as we can and just to make sure that our kids are still receiving high-quality education so that they can advance.
Well, thank you. With your experience in the school district, that's a, that's a big statement. Thank you so much. Seeing no other comments here. This, once again, was a presentation only. We're going to move on now.
Item number thirty-five, pass and adopt Resolution Number Two Six Six Six, authorizing the City Manager is designated to give notice to the sale of properties subject to the assessment lien that is delinquent and providing for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you very much. Um, Council, any comments or questions on it? If not, the chair will take a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Item number thirty-six, pass and adopt ordinance number Three Zero Seven Six. I'm enneating Chapter Thirteen Point Oh Four of the, of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code by establishing a new Apex Water Connection Fee for customers connecting to the Apex Industrial, uh, Apex Industrial Park Water System and up.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Welcome. Are you here to answer questions or a small presentation?
Answer questions.
Okay. So this is for the Apex Water System, where Tom is, is way out in front of this thing, letting the real estate, uh, investors and property owners out there know what to expect when they go build in the Apex area. Do you guys have any questions, Mr. Brady, at this time? Tom, you've already trained these people on the issue, I can tell.
Uh, Mayor, I, I just, um, I, I guess the only question is more like a statement. This is, uh, just for the public, uh, as you're wondering, you know, that has nothing to do with our, our, our public's water, uh, uh, water bills. This is strictly for people in the Apex, for developers, uh, for companies that are coming into the Apex area. Since we have incurred a cost to provide water, uh, out, uh, out in that area, this is to recoup the cost that the city has invested. So as people come in, they will pay for their fair share of the water resources in that area so that we can continue to provide services for other businesses coming to the, to the area. Correct?
That is correct.
Fantastic. I, I guess that, that's it.
Good presentation, Council.
Yeah, it's a good presentation. Well, it is a kind of like a Ward One thing. I know it's a entire citywide, but it is in Ward One. So I just thought I'd put that out there.
And, and Thirty-six and Thirty-seven are pretty much, that's your presentation or the explanation. Thank you very much.
That's, that's my Mick Jagger presentation.
We're excited about the growth out there, Tom. And under your leadership, it is just moving fast. We appreciate you. So with this time, the chair will take a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much. Please cast your vote. Well, you know, I'll take a motion to disapprove, too. I'm just letting you know it's very important, but Isaac's approved.
Item number thirty-seven, pass and adopt ordinance number Three Zero Seven Seven, which amends Chapter Thirteen Point Two Four of the North Las Vegas Municipal Code and amends ordinance number Two Seven Seven Zero to revise provisions pertaining to wastewater main construction fee refunding agreements for the wastewater main extensions, the schedule fees, and to other provisions pertaining to the connect, connection fee exemptions and to provide for other matters property related there, too.
Thank you very much. Um, Council, once again, the chair will take a motion to pass and adopt ordinance number Three Oh Seven Seven?
I'd like to make the motion to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to appointments.
Just a reminder that item number thirty-eight was continued to the July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Item number thirty-nine, appointment of the mayor pro temp for a one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. I'll step up on this one. I want to thank Councilman Barone for a year of service to the city. Many times, a city manager can't make it out to ribbon-cuttings and discussions and appointments, and the schedule just gets pretty hectic. And then sometimes the mayor just gets COVID, you know, and things happen to you. And you've been a, Councilman Barone, you've been a fine, fine mayor pro temp, you know. In fact, has everyone up here served so well at the city? But I want to thank you for your year of service to the city and taking on the leadership roles when I couldn't, um, accomplish the things I needed to do. And I don't know if you want to say anything, but you've been a great mayor pro temp.
Uh, I just want to say, uh, uh, of course, you know, I always like to do my part. Um, as, as a, um, a, a public servant, uh, whether as a teacher or here on the City Council, I like to help. So, um, I'm always three, uh, I'm always happy to help out. And I, I, I wish our incoming, uh, mayor pro temp the, the best of luck.
Well, and that would be Councilman Churchill. Um, he is now going to be the, the leader in the city when I have to leave and he can do the job and make those decisions. Was that a motion on your part?
That's a motion on my part to, uh, specifically to appoint Councilman, uh, Churchill of Ward, the, of, uh, famous Ward, oh my gosh, Four. There we go. What, no, no, you're a, you're Ward Four.
I'm Four.
Ward Four to be our, uh, mayor pro temp. That would be my Mick Jagger moment.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to make Councilman Churchill the mayor pro temp for the next twelve months. Please cast your vote. You can abstain if you want, but we won't let you say no. Item is unanimously approved, Councilman.
Item number, item number forty, appointment of a city council member to represent the Southern Nevada District Board of Health for a two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you. Councilman Black has served just stellar on that board, been a great leader. Um, during the pandemic, uh, his leadership was definitely, uh, recognized by everybody within this community and your leadership on that board, you and the team there. And so I've asked you if you would like to continue, to continue to lead our community when we have these health issues, and you expressed an interest in that. So are you accepting this call before I?
Yes. Honored to serve on the Health District Board of Health. It's a great organization.
He's approved. So the chair will call for a motion to reappoint Councilman Black to the Southern Nevada Health District?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Councilman Churchill has made that motion to approve. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number forty, forty-one, appointment of an at-large citizen member to the Southern Nevada District Public Health Advisory Board for a two-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
I would like to appoint Ron Klein to the Advisory Board. Uh, he's served, represented our community in the previous term. He's well, um, liked on the board. He's an active member. He brings ideas and dialogue to matters that are important from a public health standpoint. So I'd like to appoint, reappoint, uh, Mr. Ron Klein.
Thank you. We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number forty-two, appointment of a city council member to the Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance Executive Committee for a one-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. I've been serving on this board for quite a few years, and it's been paying off dividends. We have done exceptionally well with Las Vegas Global Economic Alliance. When companies come to town and they say, we want to look at your community and see where we would best be served, it seems like North Las Vegas is getting at least half of those opportunities to present to the companies that we are the place they should come. It's a very good organization. We're very lucky to have it in our community. And, um, I would, if somebody would make a motion, I would like to be reappointed to that board.
Yeah, Mayor, as someone who's actually served on the board, I know you're doing a spectacular job over there. And, um, I'd like you to accept the, uh, the motion to, uh, continue on that board.
Thank you. I would, and I appreciate you. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item number forty-three, appointment of a city council member to the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority for a four-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Thank you. And once again, leadership has come from Councilman Black. He's been serving on the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority through some tumultuous times. We've had a leadership change over there. I know there's been a lot of, uh, moving parts to the Southern Nevada Housing Authority. But what I do know is I'm not reading it about anybody in that organization that's in the press all the time. You have a very good board, and I think it's very exciting to have people on that board who really want to do their work. So, um, Councilman Black, do you want to continue on, did you say?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you. So Councilman Black would like to do it, so the chair will take a motion?
Uh, Mayor, uh, unless another council member would like to make a motion, uh, I'd be happy to, uh, to appoint, uh, Councilman Black.
Thank you very much. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. And once again, from the mayor and the city's point of view, thank you for serving on regional boards. These are very, very important. We get a lot of information here, and you bring it back to the city. And we benefit from your leadership on the boards and your participation. Moving on to City Manager's Report.
Mayor, Council, you don't have anything to add?
Thank you very much. Moving on to the public forum. Now is the time for the public to speak on issues not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Remember, council may hear these items, but we not take action tonight on any items raised during a public forum. So what that means is we will listen to you, but we can't debate it if it's not on the agenda and take action on it. So as the city clerk, if I have any other, besides these blue cards, there's nobody on the phone or anything else. So, uh, Michael, would you like to come back, sir? Michael Estrada? Welcome, Michael.
I also have a home in Summerlin Gate in the community. Also have a, a home in Summerlin, and I just wanted to make a quick comment to Councilman Barone. You must have been talking about black or brown kids, because the kids over there are coding, right? So we could admit that we have the worst education system in probably the whole country. The reason I'm up here is to address, address an issue for a second time. I was here two weeks ago about this, this injury that was, I mean, it's so hard to say because I'm a retired San Francisco firefighter paramedic. I've been in the fire service for 27 years and I've never been treated the way I have been treated as a resident in this city. Now, there were two paramedics who lied on a, on a legal document. There's a video that the city attorney will not, not let me see. She lied about sending it to my attorney, who no longer represents me. And what did, what does a man have to do to get justice? I pay taxes, I've served as a firefighter paramedic. If you Google Michael Estrada, San Francisco Fire Department, you will read articles about me. I've rescued people out of burning buildings. You guys gave an award to a fire station two weeks ago. I've done that many times, and I've never gotten an award. You can call San Francisco Fire Department, Station 17, right now and ask them who I am. All I want to do is get justice for what happened to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Estrada. Moving forth, Mr. Barnhill, would you please come back up one more time? And then following him, we'll have Mr. Watkins, Mr. Brian Watkins, if you're here.
I'd like to invite the public to have 10 seconds of silence so we could denounce the Their collectivist ideals and socialistic tendencies will bring about the end of mankind. We must understand that the individual is the basis of society. Without respecting the individual, we can't respect human life. Generalizing humans and believing that there's an isotropic perspective across all humans is ridiculous and idealistic and shows that you don't know anything about humans. Okay, to get to the point, is the police chief here? Well, I have one fine for the city of North Las Vegas. It's an incompetency citation. I'm going to leave this right here for you guys. I'm not going to explain it like that. You guys can read the paper. You have, you've been officially served, two weeks to respond to it. The fine is subject to negotiability. And this one is for the police chief. I don't know where he's at, but I'll leave this here, too. I would like to make a emphasis on the dangers of the CCP. They're, they're running mass espionage programs, they're funding some of the cartels, they're sending precursor drugs to, it's been well documented, they've been tracing some of the fentanyl precursors to China. They're dropping it off in the sea, the cartels go pick it up in the sea. It's a whole big mess. They've, they've been invading our, our real estate and everything, and everybody's acting like a school, you know? Well, not everybody, but I'm saying that there, there's this real big problem that doesn't seem to be addressed. You know, we've got some critical infrastructure that is subject to easy manipulation by foreign agents that are able to sneak into the government, you know? There, there genocide on the Uyghurs and genocide on multiple different minorities and it's, it's a terrible place over there. The idea of communism is fake. It's like a whole religion, right? You've got this heaven, which is the communist utopia, which is basically anarchism. But in actuality, after the establishment of socialist state, it's never going away. You, you can't, you can't fight against the government in, in modern day, you know? The, the government has way too much power. And it's, in socialist governments, there's no checks, no limitations, state controls everything, you know? So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Barnhill. And I think the last person was Mr. Watkins. Oh, welcome, Byron.
Brian.
Brian, you know, I did that two weeks ago. I'm so sorry, Brian.
It's spelled different, so I've got that my whole life. It's Brian Watkins. I do live in Las Vegas, Nevada, not North Las Vegas, but my cousin, we're considered cousins, we're very good friends, because personally, I don't trust anybody due, due to the disappointments I've encountered throughout my life by governments or other people. So I don't trust people as far as I can throw them, except Michael Estrada and another individual. But I've been a witness with Michael Estrada, what he's going through, and as you can heard from his voice, sometimes I'll speak to him on the phone, excuse my language, he's pissed off because the pain that shoots in your back, I don't know if you had a back injury before, it's excruciating. And the kind that he's had has been recorded and documented. It's, it sucks. So, you know, I, you know, I can't express it no more clear nor plainer than that. And then recently, and the North Las Vegas ballistics has it now, there was a bullet fired through his house by his, inside his, the main, major bedroom. Happened to be around when all this is going on. So it, it, it brings to my attention now that he's asked me, so I used to do bodyguard protection a few years back, that sometimes I'm walking around armed, looking after his safety. Now, you know, I, I don't want to be put in that position, but, and you all, even the city attorney could look this up, and I found this out, I did an essay on this one in my criminal justice classes, and most don't know this. As a gentleman stated here regarding another subject, how people don't know things, because they just don't know, they're busy lies, but police, and this goes from local level to the Supreme Court cases, police are not constitutionally have the duty to protect individuals from violent crimes. Most people don't know that. My professor, who was a retired cop, he did not know that. There are a plethora of court cases that supports that. So point being is this, I don't want to have to be put in a position to protect him, to use force to eliminate a threat, because, I mean, Christ, someone's taking it serious and he has no enemies. Is that a clean life? You can look up his background. So I just want to put that on the record. That's it. So I am a witness to everything that's going on right now, and that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you very much.
Oh, also, I'm sorry, real quick, a couple of letters that was mailed and sent to the city attorney by Michael Estrada, also on the subject regarding his back. He's been getting run around about that also. So we have copies of that here with us.
Okay, thank you very much. And once again, we can't comment on things that aren't on the agenda. Is there anybody else that would like to come forward and discuss with the city council? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.